Okay, you've got attendance. Has everyone had the opportunity to read the minutes from our previous meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion then to...
I make a motion we accept the meeting from 6:16. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed. Okay, we have a hearing that has been continued for Long Build Homes. It's a notice of intent for the development of Hunter's Hill subdivision.
I just want to elaborate, and as we recall, they had filed previously when spring or winter of 2021, and then filed again for delineation approval, which we since approved because we realized that the site has changed a bit, and now they're back before us for the subdivision. Some of the abutters may have received a much different...
That's my ears.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Very good. That's fine. I like that. All right, thank you, Lisa.
Oh, you sound good.
Oh, perfect, yeah. I like that. That's good. So, it's Evan Watson with W Engineering representing the applicant. As Lisa mentioned, that this is a continuation of a hearing that we've been going through, a notice of intent filing. Last time we were here, we basically accepted our delineation, which was great, because then that allowed us to move ahead and finalize our design. But we delayed the hearing until this month, in July. And to do that, we notified all the abutters once again, because it was not to a date certain, so everybody's re-notified. And we've also, we were asked to get input from planning board, get input from Stormwater, and come back, and we're all set with you guys, and you'd be happy to take a look and have your own opinion on how we did things. So, we have had a meeting with the planning board. It was actually very positive. We had a lot of abutters show up, and we had a lot of positive input from the planning board, and they liked the project. We also just yesterday met with the Stormwater Committee, and they liked the redesign that we did. Planning Board has sent out to Green Environmental their review engineer, so it's under review with them. This board has already voted to contract with Niche Engineering, and I believe when I filed with you, I copied them. So I'm hoping that they're going to be doing their review in a timely manner, and we can get their technical review. And when we come back, we'll have comments from both planning board review engineer, from your review engineer, and we will address those comments and make that determination at that time. The one last bit that we didn't have was, in the delineation, we left open, there was a few potential vernal pools on the site. We did identify two vernal pools that we said were absolutely vernal pools, and then there were two spots that we were looking after. So, just today, I got a report from LEC, so I don't expect you to act on it, but we can take a look at what it says. Basically, one of the two vernal pools is absolutely a vernal pool without a doubt, and the other one, it doesn't appear to be a vernal pool, but because we are in a drought when we're trying to evaluate, it makes it difficult for them to definitively say yes. So I'll go over that, and I won't, you know, spend too much time. Again, this was the project as originally approved back in the day with the resource areas. These are the new resource areas that we've delineated, so this is just kind of stepping through what we've already discussed. And this is our new design.
This is what?
This is our new design. So we've, now that we've seen where all these resource areas are, we obviously want to avoid them to the extent practical. So, the features that have changed with this plan is this road that came through here was a boulevard-style road, because it was a dead end. So that's been changed to a single road, so we have less impervious area there. This road that came across has been eliminated, because we have, in these orange areas, we have vernal pools, we have resource areas in here, and so we felt that that was a sensitive area, so we removed that road. And the other thing that we've been able to do is we added some property here, so we're actually able to continue this road, and now there's nothing in here that's a dead end. We have much better circulation, and we're still able to get the same number of lots. For drainage, we've removed this detention basin, because it was in a resource area. So we've increased the size of this basin to accommodate for that. We have this basin here, which we were able to move outside of the 100-foot buffer zone. And there was a stem of a road that came through here that we eliminated also. The only thing that's not shown on this plan is two things. You could see here parcel G is reserved for another 11 lots, which we haven't designed yet, and when we get to that point, we'll be coming back with another permit request in the future. And then we do not show the community center, so we've been working with the residents of Hunter's Hill. As you may know, that there's actually 33, 34 homes in there right now. And part of the project is that we need to have a community center, so we're working with them as to where to place that, and what type of amenities they want for that. And when we get that designed again, we'll come back to you if it's within resource area jurisdiction. So again, the areas that we were talking about with vernal pool, here, we've definitely said that was, back here, that definitely was. And this little tiny spot right there, which was actually a man-made... I can pass these out if it's okay with you guys. To the back, there's some photographs. So when they were constructing things in here, they created this little spot here. They excavated some material, and it left a bowl adjacent to the wetlands, so it's standing water, and now it's being used as a vernal pool. This area here is similar, because this road was constructed to bring in utilities. And so that disturbance there held up a little bit of water, and that's the one that saw some characteristics of vernal pool, but has since dried out, so... And I also just wanted to let you guys know that on the design plans, I highlighted in yellow, these are the jurisdictional areas, and these are the 100-foot buffer zones. So you can see the new road that we added in here. We're all outside of jurisdictional areas. The orange areas are the 200-foot offset from vernal pools. So those are shown on the plan, and that's why we've really reduced the amount of everything that we're doing in here. And then this is the area in the back. And then there is one area, again, if you recall, I mentioned that we eliminated this road that went across, because we have wetlands, we have vernal pools. Now by doing that, we used to have a lot of water that came down and was picked up by the road. And now by eliminating that road, too much water comes down through here, and we need to deal with it. So we will be asking the commission to allow us to install a drainage well through here that's within the 100-foot buffer zone and within the 200-foot to vernal pool. But it is in an area that's already disturbed, and there is utilities already in that area that we'll be disconnecting. So, it's kind of an already disturbed area.
Utilities that will what?
Will be disconnected, discontinued. So there's a water line that runs through there, and there may be an electric... There might just be water that runs through there. But again, being a previously disturbed area, I'm hoping that that's okay, because once we put in that, we'll be able to refresh that area a little bit. So I'll flip back to the main page, and if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
May I ask one? What are the names of the...
No, not yet. This is for us.
Questions from the board first.
We will, yeah, we'll be taking it.
Yeah, I'll open it up. Charlie? Do you have any questions?
No.
Lisa?
I like the new point.
Thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate it. I asked him some questions at the Stormwater meeting yesterday. It wasn't really a public hearing, it was just an informal discussion, but I know they're going to be doing some more soil evaluation in there, so I asked, you know, went, and I think maybe if the commission would like to have a site visit out there, the Stormwater Committee's going to have one, so maybe we could do it at the same time. If anybody wants to go take a walk, take a look at it.
We'll be having a meeting on August 3rd at 8:00 AM.
Good memory.
Which is a Wednesday. I was just looking at it, because I was talking to Brian from LEC.
I'll be more into that.
Yeah, and then we'll also be doing, as Lisa mentioned, Stormwater asked us to do some test pits in the proposed Stormwater BNP areas.
Is there any public input? Mr. Johnson?
I'd like to know the names of the two or three roads that... I'm sorry, it takes me a while. I'm so...
Say it.
You don't have to get up. It's fine.
Well, I am going to be long-winded. I'll rant. I've got a lot on my mind tonight.
I said dealing with wetlands.
Right.
If it's not dealing with wetlands, we won't address it.
Well, he just said he's disconnected, discontinuing roads. I'm sorry I misspoke before. I apologize to the board for that. I'm sorry I lose my train of thought. Bear with me, please. I'm taking pills for that, too. But what are the names of the roads that you're discontinuing? I heard you were going to discontinue two or three roads there.
That's right, so all the roads that have homes on them now will remain the same. So I think there's Mulligan Way and...
No, the ones you're going to discontinue, I asked.
Yeah, so the roads that, I don't know if they actually had names at the time.
They did.
Oh, they did, okay. So I only knew them as Road C, Road F.
Yeah, okay. May I address the board now, because now we're getting deep into the... You want me to come forward? Because I'll be honest with you, I lose my train of thought. My lawyer could not, could not attend no wait tonight. And he told me that we'll see how the meeting goes, and then if we're not happy Monday, he's going to file injunction against the two boards, the town boards, and I got to be careful when I say home, because if I get laughed at, I want to say, "Oh, Bill," I want to say. What stakeout is it? And Almeida. And possibly... I'm sorry.
Could you just, why don't you just explain? You can sit there. You don't have to get up, sir. It's fine.
Okay. I, my, I thought it was great that we're going to finish this thing. All right? I wasn't against it. I was all for it, okay? April 17th, 2007, I purchased a lot, okay? And it was going to be a perfect retirement. That is, how many years ago? 15 years, three months, correct? And Charlie Mellow, you were involved a little bit in that. I don't think you, you might not remember. And I got everything here. God bless David Gay. He was way ahead of me. He documented across all his teeth and eyes on the condition. All right? And, I'm sorry. I wish the lawyer could have been here, but he can't. Give me a second or two. Where, where, where?
You bought it. You said you bought a lot.
I'm taking pills for that, too.
You bought a lot?
Yes, okay. And so Joe Lawrence was the building inspector. He was down somewhere. So I had the plans, $850,000, beautiful plans set up and everything. I went down to get a building bid. He goes, "Well, you've got to go back to Charlie Mellow and get, make sure that it's okay with the environment and everything, or I give you one." So I come back, we went downstairs in the town hall. You may not remember me, but you, I remember you. And you said, "No problem. Everything's okay." So I go back to Joe Lawrence. I says, "Well, Charlie Mellow just said everything's fine. No problem." "Well, he says you got another problem. What's that?" He says, "We won't give out permits unless the road is blacktopped." The thing David Gay was, "I got it all here. I can't get out of it either." He's got every clause in there. Because of inheritance and selling it, it's still binding, okay? In fact, the building inspector, I thought he'd be here. He's sorry. He knows what I can ask him.
Okay, can I, can I... So you're, I think what you're saying is the lot that you bought on a particular road doesn't exist anymore.
Well, I didn't know about that until...
Wait a minute, is that, is that your contention?
Well, it wasn't until I just heard it. But if you're...
Okay, so...
If you're giving out, because my daddy always said, "If you hear the other guy's story, maybe you think differently." We all do, right? So where was I anyway? Okay, the blacktop, all right? So now, 10 years or so later, I guess, let me call him Godfather or something, Almeida, he buys the full estate, the developer. And he gets a blacktop, right? So now, I come before the new building inspector, the current building inspector, for a permit. He says, "Well," he says, "I just gave the lot to Almeida." He says, "I'm not going to allow it anymore." I said, "Well, gee, I came a long, long before Almeida, you know." He says, "Well, he says, "Well, I give it to you. I got to give it to..." That's understandable, okay? So I sit back, all right? Now, they're going to redo this thing. Wonderful. I'm all for it, 100, 1%, I mean, this is 15 years down. And we finally got a thing from you people, five weeks after the meeting, a notification. That's why we were not present ever here. It was five weeks after the meeting, we got a notice from the conservation. All right? I said, "Well, don't worry about it. It's great. We're going to have surgery. We'll be able to build that wonderful retirement house and, you know, maybe sell the lot." Need the lot? You know, I told my wife. Well, she got a little skeptical on it. She said, "I'm going to make a call to the town hall." I didn't know that until she just told me. She was the one that answered the phone. She says, "That lot doesn't exist. There's no such thing as Lot 88." I said, "I got the deed. I can show you what I got right here and everything." And I believe in coincidences. Three hours later, home, I got to be careful. I must say that word, home built. Lawyer, within three hours, is calling my wife. Well, my wife is far from a dummy. And he's trying to smooth her, you know? She got it, so she let it go and everything. You know? And he says, "Well," he says, "we had to make changes and everything, and he says, 'That lot won't even be builtable,'" and he says, "Oh, the other thing, I forgot. I'm sorry." "Out of the blue," he says, "we found out you own a lot." Damn it, a brick out of the blue. What kind of lawyer is he if he doesn't do his homework? I'd fire him, okay? I mean, that's what you hire a lawyer for, you know? And he tells her... So anyhow, now I'm upset. I said, "Wait a minute. There's something fishy going on here." So yesterday, I called the attorney and everything, and that's what I told you, what he told me. I come down, and I wanted to get anything from you people that I could get to come to the meeting. Well, you were all at a meeting somewhere. You were lucky. And the girl was very nice in there. She is very nice. I'd hire her. She's very polite, pleasant. And she says, "Well," she says, "well, I'm going to email him, but I'll email the building inspector, too." Well, he came. Nobody from the conservation came, but he came. And he says, "I know you." I said, "Well, yeah, who we have there." And he tells me that the meeting's tonight, which was yesterday. I says, "No, this Thursday night. I didn't know anything about the planning board meeting. I never got notified there either. Nothing." Not their fault, though. I found out this morning. It wasn't their fault. It wasn't mine either. It was posted on his phone. Well, anyhow. He says, "You better be there tonight." So I went there tonight. And what he has just said now, and he wasn't out of order, that the planning board thoroughly behind this situation. Well, they certainly changed their mind since this morning. I think he better check with them, and he hasn't checked with them since this morning.
It simply appears as though what you're looking at, at least what I think you're looking at, is more of a come-together agreement with the new developer, maybe to switch off a lot or whatever it may be, rather than a conservation issue.
Well, I think...
You know, if you, excuse me, if you meet with the new developer and show all your paperwork that they're of ownership, and then switch off to, ask them to switch off to another parcel, I think that would be, that would better serve your interest rather than going through a dozen different boards, a lawyer, and getting yourself riled up. I can see that you're riled, and I'm not saying without merit. I'm not saying without merit, but I really think that have a meeting with the developer first.
All right.
Okay?
Let me speak one second, please.
Well, you have been, and, and I would like to continue with this, with our hearings. We have, we have about 20 items on our agenda, and I really, I really think that you would be better served meeting with them.
Well, if I'm not out of here happy, believe me, we're putting an injunction on all two committees in court, and I've had it, all right? And you're telling me to go see the developer, when the lawyer called my wife outright lies? Are you going to deal with the liar? Tell me something. What do you, what faith do you have in a guy that outright lies?
Wait a minute.
Tell me.
What?
Put yourself on your...
How do we fit into your lot? We don't fit into your lot. This, this commission does not fit into your lot.
You're doing away with Lot 88, right?
Well, that's, that's what I said.
If I could address that, yeah.
He's going to address that.
I know, I spoke to his wife. She called me.
I did as well.
Yep. And...
And I'll tell you, you're the company's lawyer there.
So I'm with W Engineering, and Lee Castagnetti is the developer. He's the vice president of land development and in town council, in house council. What he's referring to is there is a...
Can you hear him? No.
Yeah.
I can't see anything either.
So Lot 88, we are revising some of the lots.
Would Lot 88 come back into the picture, because they said there was no such thing, even your lawyer?
One moment, one moment. So we were unaware that Lot 88 had been sold. The title on the property is confusing. There is a lot of, we have, I'm sorry. There's houses that have been sold in there, and there's lots that have been sold, and they are mostly owned by, owned by Mr. Almeida and a realty trust. And we did not pick up that Lot 88 had been sold. So I did the research. I see at the registry now that Lot 88, you have a D2, and that's fine. So Lot 88 still exists, but we called it Lot 88R, because the wetland resource area, buffer zone, comes close to it. So we were proposing to widen the lot. But now that we know that you own the lot, we are going to take that off of our plan, and Lot 88 will remain exactly the way it was. And so it will be Lot 88 on Sand wedge Drive. It's not going to be affected in any way. However, if there are issues, because the wetland resource areas did change, it did affect the entire project. And the original Lot 88, as shown, would have had difficulty to develop with a certain house. So Lee called your wife and mentioned...
Who's Lee?
Lee is the attorney for Long Built Homes. And said, "There may be some difficulty in developing the lot, but we would like to work with you in either exchanging some land and coming to an agreement." And we didn't want to bring it up in front of the public hearings at the boards, only because it's not pertinent to conservation and that I know they're busy. So we would still like to have that meeting with you and your wife. Both Lee, I can attend as well, and we can work something out. By as far as anything on these plans, the next, we are being asked to revise the plans by their consultants. We'll show Lot 88 as it is, and you won't be affected at all.
May I say something? Mine is being changed on Lot 88, and your lawyer, you better get together, because you don't agree with your own lawyer. He says, tell him to cuss him to capacitating her, though she's smart enough to know that. And he's telling her that, "Well, that lot, because of the redoing the..."
Delineation.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I appreciate it. I lose it. I'm sorry. I wish my lawyer could have been here. But where was I?
Yep, it's fine. That lot...
We're, we're making good progress.
Okay, that does come under conservation when you start moving the line, doesn't it? So I am in order.
Okay, so what needs to happen is he needs to...
No, ask me to answer the question. Am I in order if you're losing, moving the line on 88?
Yes, but however, if you were to come back to us to develop that lot, we know there's resources there, so we would ask for it to be flagged. You might be better off keeping that delineation, because someone else paid for it.
The delineation is actually not on Lot 88. The delineation is in the open space behind it.
You know, I paid, I paid $165,000 15 years ago, okay? I paid to de-stuff, clean it. I paid to de-stuff it.
Okay.
I paid to weed wipe it for 15 years.
Can we leave it that, that you will be meeting with the agents for Long Built Homes? And then, because I would like to move on.
Well, I'm...
Is there, is there any other public input on this issue? Okay, what I would like to do then is continue the hearing for, until August, our August 18th meeting?
I would request that, yes, Mr. Chairman.
So that will be continued to then. And Mr. Johnson, please, no, that has been closed. That has been closed for this evening. The hearing has been closed for this evening. It's continued, it is actually continued until the August 18th date. And I strongly recommend that you deal with them and discuss what your options are, because I think they're going to have...
They're right here, lying to you.
Okay.
But work with their lawyer.
I...
Their lawyer can show up, too. It's fine.
I, I'm requesting that you don't approve anything until this is settled. That's my request. And if you're not going to be happy that way, I guess we'll have to file an injunction against you folks. And the planning board doesn't want any power.
Okay, our next hearing is...
I'll be speaking with the planning board. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Our next hearing is continued.
Evan, I need you to sign.
It's Forest Street, and Joshua Glass has requested a continuance to 8:18. Is there, is there a motion to continue?
You both can continue this one?
Okay, I'm sorry. Is there a motion to continue the...
Strong one. Long Build Homes.
It's great.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Continue. Okay.
Reed Brothers.
We have a second hearing. It was for this evening. It was, Joshua Glass has requested a continuance until 18. It's Forest Hills. Is there a motion to continue?
I make a motion. We continue Forest Hills till 8:18. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Reed Brothers Farm, Outback Engineering has requested a continuance to 8:18.
Let's read, let's read the file numbers, 2017-0447, and they're continuing, because they're waiting for their water quality certificate. They'll be back before us, hopefully, August 18th.
Is there a motion to continue?
I make a motion. We continue Reed Brothers Farms till 8:18.
Is there, all in favor?
Aye.
Continued. Okay, next is a notice of intent request by David Burdos, 2396 Pleasant Street, Dyton. Lot 54, file number SE17-459. Retro retro approval for connecting in addition to an existing single-family home within a 200-foot river front area in the Totten River.
Do you have copies for them to look at?
Yep.
Sorry, I didn't read them.
What is the most recent one? Is it, let's see?
The last one I just gave you.
Does it say?
Over here.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Get some extra copies as well.
Well, this is 42927, that would be old.
This is the last one that we just...
I gotta throw that one away.
This is the last one, which we just added to the document.
Okay, if you could put some, cut one, at least one or two up here if you have them.
Yep. Okay. Okay, so this is the same thing here. David?
Yes. Sorry?
Your name?
Yep, I'm sorry, I was just waiting to get started. My name's Rick Reed from Lighthouse Lantarang, so I'm representing Mr. Burdos.
Rick Reed.
Rick Reed, R-E-I-D. Lisa had mentioned this is a continuation of a prior meeting, it's an after-the-fact filing. We had also hoped to take care of a question on the floats and on the Taunton River that we have. Back in May, we had received a letter from the Division of Marine Fisheries, that was, I think, just the day before the last meeting that we had, and at that time, we weren't able to address those comments. In this instance here, we've kind of gone through their comments, had a couple of conversations with the agent as well for DMF, and we present these revisions to you. What we're hoping to do is kind of get our approval tonight, we've kind of gone through, we went through the comments that were made the last meeting, I think one of them was, it'd be really nice to have a profile to kind of get a better understanding of, and you see that in the upper-left corner, to understand what the floats were actually doing. As you might recall, initially, the floats at low tide actually did rest on the bottom. And also, DMF had also brought up a couple of comments. One of their comments or recommendations was that the dock, typically, the shadows that the docks present themselves on the local salt marshes, they felt it was a little bit low, their typical standard is a one-to-one, although they had mentioned that newer ones would be one and a half to one, a height-to-width ratio. So we had proposed that, well, you know what, to address that comment, we'll raise the existing dock about 12 inches to make it the requisite 36-inch above the existing salt marsh. The existing salt marsh, in relationship to the existing deck, right now is a little bit under that, so we propose to raise that by about 12 inches. Then also, a second comment that DMF had brought up was, of course, the floats. What we're proposing is actually to take their comments, install a couple of new posts adjacent to those floats, and also actually install stops. The stops will prevent the floats from actually resting on the sea bottom, basically, because in this area, you can see by the profile, it does rise up quite quickly adjacent to the dock, but it does actually, the water does, the bottom of the bay does kind of zip out, the channel is not too far in. So it's really the first and second floats that really have issue, that actually, at a mean-low-water situation, would actually rest. So we're proposing, we'll, we'll take the floats, the two first floats, put them on stops, and then the third float would actually act as a inverted ramp of sorts, because the last two floats technically would be floating on water. If by chance we have an extreme, extreme low tide, which does happen at least once a year, the last two floats would still, that third float would actually be a ramp, and that, that last float would be always floating in at least three feet of water. So with that, we're...
I just wanted to remind everybody, Conservation Commission has jurisdiction over landward issues. This is a waterway, the waterways' issues need to be dealt with through DEP Waterways Division. We cannot review floats in the water and approve floats in the water, that's a Chapter 91 permitting issue. So as far as everything else goes on the lot, that's what we should be really focused on.
So our intention, and our impression was to try to appease you, DMF did emphasize it was their recommendations, they're not listing it as a requirement, they reviewed our initial application and had recommended these. We, we wholeheartedly want to agree with that. The dock is permitted by the harbor master, it is a informal dock that's removed at the end of every season, we consider it a temporary. Everything here is temporary and is removed at the end of the year. So this is not a permanent structure by any means, it's meant to be a temporary system that is pulled out and put in during the appropriate seasons.
Along the river.
I'm sorry?
Same as all the other temporary...
Well, all the others are permanent, I mean...
Yeah, permanent or seasonal require a Chapter 91 license. Okay, so Division Marine Fisheries gave their comments, and they've addressed their comments to the boat, to the best of their ability at this point, which we appreciate. However, it's still a Chapter 91 licensing issue.
That's under the water, though, that's...
Not the temporary dock.
Temporary and permanent, says it right here.
All the other temporary docks in the river don't have...
I know, and that's an issue, too.
You're sure of that?
I'm positive. And I'm, actually, Michael Mullin and I...
Pretty new to me.
Mike Mullin and I are having a conversation with DEP on Monday about this, so...
Okay, we weren't made aware of that, we're under the impression we're trying to move forward.
Sorry, not about this specific project, about the overall permitting of waterway structures.
Yep, and we recognize that there's probably a lot of other non-licensed docks along the river. We do contend that we're the little guy on the river. We were just doing an addition, and then, in order to appease the addition, because we are doing riverfront, it does impact the riverfront, make the after-the-fact notice of intent filing, our intention was to try to rectify, well, hey, maybe we can also help with the dock. It was Lisa's recommendation that we kind of, there was compensatory storage that was originally required to account for the addition. It was our understanding that if we forego the compensatory storage for the addition and concentrate on maybe improving the front, I mean, we're proposing plantings, I mean, this is now focused entirely on the dock, which we weren't really here for. We're, we're here for the addition and getting that after-the-fact notice of intent.
Yes, so I mean, to me, they're almost better off at this point. I think we should continue the hearing until we've at least addressed some of these issues with DEP. I need to find out specifically if this requires, because I have, I don't feel that we have the jurisdiction at all to approve a float or anything in the water, in the waterway. And since then, some things have happened with the town and the harbor master and the building official, that has led me to believe that there's more going on, that we should not be approving anything new right now.
But if we don't have jurisdiction of what's in the water, then we should just leave that to Chapter 91 DEP.
Yep.
And, and just be concerned about what is over the land, and if it's over the land and it's satisfactory, there's no need for us to be holding them up forever.
Well, the plan right now shows modifications to this, and if you approve that, you're approving something technically I believe we shouldn't be approving. If it didn't have that on it, which is, I know now we're going backwards. So I think we should continue it until we get more answers from DEP at the next meeting we should have.
But if DEP is, is going to be concerned with the waterway...
I believe they need it...
And not the land...
Yeah, Chapter 91 license, just like everybody else who's filed for the water quality certificates.
Are they, are they in, in compliance with the land portion?
Um, yes, I would like to see, the only changes I would like to see on that part, the plantings, I would like to see some monitoring, maybe to have Stephen Schmeele twice a year come out and monitor the plantings for survival, descendants of photos.
Well, I mean, we're, we're, we have proposed the plantings based on your recommendation.
Right.
We have certain concerns that, we don't even think the plants are going to live, because there's a reason why it's nothing but grass, and if you notice, it's all ledge there. There's a reason why nothing ever gets developed there, there's not enough growth there, we literally have to bring up...
So did you want to take the plantings off the plan, is that what you're saying?
Well, I, I mean, in order to move forward with the notice of intent for the addition, I mean, we turned into the dock based on your recommendation. We're, we're in full agreement, and we, you know, if we can move forward with the addition, closing, he's got a building permit open right now that still can't be closed. Ultimately, with the, with the, because we have work within the riverfront area, and, you know, we can easily pull off any work associated with the dock, the dock is an existing dock, the harbor master has given his temporary license, even if maybe a regulation has changed. He's had this dock for a while, so we have no problem, if you like, we'll remove that from the plan, and, and you can just recommend and work on just the landward portion.
So then we're permitting an unauthorized structure in the river, because it's already there, it's all already there, that's what we have to remember.
This has been going on for quite a while, and it really is a shame that something concrete can't be done tonight.
Something so small, that's, that's what's, I mean...
Yeah, it sets precedent, but, you know, I mean...
Can we, you know, accept anything associated with, with the approval of the...
We don't have, but we don't have a final plan, so maybe there's a possibility I have a conversation with DEP next week, and we could possibly add another meeting in the next couple of weeks, so that you're not waiting. But to be frank, I mean, they had the addition on for how many years, and now we're requiring the...
The addition was completed in '21.
Yeah, so, I mean, what's the big, what's the rush?
18.
2018.
Okay, so, I mean, can we wait like a couple more weeks here?
What are we waiting, what are we waiting for, for you?
We need clarification...
On?
Whether we can permit a structure in the waterways or not.
Well, you said it was Chapter 91.
Right, there's two forms that go along with Chapter 91. Okay, I know you guys are not familiar with it, I'm partially familiar. The harbor master apparently has turned over some documents to the building official about it, and it made me honestly, frankly, a little confused. So I'm reading a bunch of documents this weekend to try to...
I'd like a copy of that if you don't mind.
Yeah, of course, you can have this one, I have it, and I emailed you guys all of this information.
Do you have a copy of the harbor master's actual license for his dock? I thought we submitted that.
I do, David brought it to me.
Okay.
It was always my impression that harbor masters licensed temporary docks.
Yeah.
I wasn't aware of any change.
Mostly because of the size, I mean, we're only talking small two, three, four floats.
I know.
Uh, there...
So I requested it be added because there was bank alteration, okay? So that initially, that's why it was added, and then, of course, it came up that that was maybe permitted as a float, and then Division Marine Fisheries submitted their letter, which they have worked with them on. However, just like the water quality permits, like Reed's, for example, TLC, the ones in the past, we necessarily shouldn't be giving out a permit for a plan, knowing that this might all change, this dock, I'm not an engineer, you guys aren't engineers, it might be changing, you know what I mean?
Okay, so...
We should be able to do something tonight that would allow them to get their permit.
What permit? I, what permit? They've already built their house.
But they're going through this month after month after month, it's just a pain. I'm sure they're not happy.
Yeah, but things have come up, come up, I mean, this came up the day before the May meeting, correct?
Yeah, and we addressed it.
Yeah, and then...
In good faith, trying to, and now, and now we're turning this into a Chapter 91 issue, which...
It is.
We have, we have, we have a, we have a license from the Harbor Commission, I mean, that, who has, the harbor master has the authority, is my understanding.
It's mine, too.
And we have that, so I would argue that you're basically can provide an approval contingent on the harbor master's approval, which you have no jurisdiction over, obviously, he has none over you.
Actually, he should be turning and, I shouldn't have had to get that from you. That information should have been turned over to the commission previously, we should have, should be getting copies of all the harbor master permits, so that's another issue.
Yeah, I would contend, that's a departmental issue.
It is conservation, though.
In good faith, we provided it.
And I, I would not approve, I do, cannot condition this plan as it's before us right now.
So right now, you have, you said, raised existing deck, that is over the grass and the marsh grass and all that?
Yep, the salt marsh itself, yep.
Okay, we, the ramp does not exist, correct?
Well, the ramp does exist now, but we're proposing to raise it even greater in order to account for DMF's recommendation.
That's over water or over, over marsh?
Over marsh, over marsh.
Okay, so that portion would come under our jurisdiction if it's over the grass. I say we just permit that and...
Well, then the plan should be changed before we close the hearing, and...
To show us what you're, you're gonna do, because...
To change what? I mean, truthfully, if you're saying waterways, where's the jurisdiction of the waterways? Mean-low water, correct? So the first two floats, where we're proposing, is above mean-low water. If you notice on that dock alignment, the MLW on the very bottom, you see that dashed line that goes along the bottom?
Actually, it would be the bank.
If you look at the intersection of where the water would be with the bottom of the, of the, the river, is actually at that second stop.
I see it.
So we're, you know, we're not even contending, asking the other two floats, we're not asking you to approve the last two floats, it's just the stops for the first two. And I can even contend, as long as we, the second one is a matter of trying to control the tilt, but technically, your jurisdiction by Lisa's contention is above mean-low water, which is the dock, the ramp, and the first float, which we're proposing to put those stops on, which we, we're doing recommendations from the DMF exactly, exactly what they're asking.
The conversation would have happened with DEP this week if I hadn't been so swamped, I've been in meetings, in meetings, so...
Questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Any more?
I think we should have all our ducks in a row before we sign anything.
Well, I'm just, I'm just asking if you have, is there anyone in the, anyone in attendance have questions? Is your idea to continue it until, for a month, or...
This is going on a long time, too long.
Well, you know, I, I agree with you, and I'm, and I don't know if we should just head to the, that first section, and that first float, that's still in the water, correct?
Yes, yep. Or technically, it's, it's above mean-low water, which is the jurisdiction line, that's, that would be considered salt marsh.
Okay, now, that's gonna be a driven pile that goes in?
We're not proposing driving piles, no, they're existing, again, we're dealing with a light-duty float, so technically they...
You have to anchor it somehow.
Well, they're, they're anchored on a couple of rocks on shore. Well, they're, they're anchored on a couple of rocks on shore. They have an existing, I don't know, ten ton or twenty ton boulder that, uh, exists on shore. I think that's actually shown.
Okay, but you have the, the, um, um, the floats, they're gonna be contained.
Yeah, so these-
They're gonna drop down to a, to a, to a point, and if, and if the water goes lower, they're still gonna be above that, but so, that's gonna be into the ground somewhere as a-
As a post, yeah, yeah. We, we're presently, we have these inch and a half posts that, um, are, uh, holding them in place. So, our intention was to, uh, add stops to those or embrace across in order for it just to, literally just rest. So, any of the existing posts-
They're already there.
Yeah. So, we're, we're, we're trying to address the DMF's comment about keeping it two and a half feet above mean low water. We're trying to address that issue, and, cause we agree it's, it's in a shellfish habitat, um, and we wanna listen to their comments and, and address them.
Okay, and what I'm looking for is either a motion to continue or a motion to close the hearing and issue an order of conditions.
Well, I don't think you can issue an order of conditions on this map the way it is.
Okay, so your motion then would be to continue?
I think we, what we need to do is, is, is have a map, and if, if we're gonna issue an order of conditions on something, all I want on the map is what we have to, uh, what's in our jurisdiction. I, I don't want anything added, like the floats. Uh, I, I don't think the floats ought to be, it, it should be just in the salt marsh and everything else that where-
Any work outside the salt marsh?
Right.
Okay, so that, are you gonna make a motion to continue it until August eighteen?
Yeah, can you, can you get us, can you, can you get us another?
So, so you're asking to remove the other two floats, the outside floats from the plan, so you're only looking at just the floats contained above mean low water?
Now, and Lisa, you're gonna have more information on that, uh-
Yeah, we're gonna wrap, I'm gonna wrap my head around this.
Can't hear you, Lisa.
I'd like to wrap my head around the chapter ninety-one licenses.
But that would give you time for all of that, too.
I'm not an engineer. I am not in any way, shape, or form ready to approve or digest. You know, I looked at that, and I appreciate what you did, and I tried to make heads of tail, but it, I was trying too hard. You know what I mean? I mean, honestly, it's outside of my realm, so there's no one for me to, obviously, we're not gonna hire an outside consultant for this.
Yeah, but until you introduce that piece of information, we would have approved this, because all the temporary docks are permitted by the harbor master. I don't care about that. I'm telling you, that appeared when-
Yeah, right.
When you requested.
You're requesting, now you're telling them to come up with another drawing.
I would not like-
No, no, but I mean from the ramp back. So, now, then you get involved with that chapter ninety and ninety-one. He comes up with a drawing from the first float backwards, and then DEP or the salt marsh people tell you, well, you're gonna go out farther. So, here we go for another two months. I mean, you know, somewhere, somebody's gotta draw the line, you know? Uh, they're mean, they're above mean low water. You know what I mean? On the first two. I realize it's, it's, it's a catch twenty-one.
Exactly.
But like Charlie says, the harbor master usually takes care of most of this. So, you know.
Okay, uh, we really didn't have a motion to continue. Bill talked about it, but do, uh, do you have a-
Well, I realize that, Jim, though, but, you know, he's asking, he's asking from-
You have a motion to close it then?
Well, he's asking from the first float back for another drawing.
That was Bill asking.
Uh, can you hold off on that? I don't, I don't, I don't like that idea. We've already got a-
That would be the same thing.
They wanna keep the structure. So, if, if the structure isn't on there, because obviously there's bank alteration, then they're in violation. I don't want them to be in violation because we're trying to get them permitted. You know what I mean?
I know what you mean.
I'm forwarding you guys the information I received. I know I already did, but I'm forwarding it again.
I'm waiting for some kind of, of a motion to, to continue.
Well, I mean, it's a catch, it's a catch twenty-two, Jim.
I, well, I know.
It's, uh-
Well, I, I, I see it.
I mean, I, what do we gotta do? Continue it, and then get the ruling from, from DEP or whatever, or the harbor master or somebody, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I need to have some conversations.
With who?
DEP, possibly the harbor master.
Who's the harbor master?
Ron Marino.
What?
Ron Marino.
Marino.
Oh, God.
Yeah, he's been harbor master forever.
I'm still waiting for a motion.
I'll make a motion to continue the hearing.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass. Lisa, we're gonna close this up next month. We, we gotta do that.
Well-
Yeah.
It's pending, uh, ninety-one. Here we are.
Thank you very much.
I'll let you guys look at this.
You want these back?
Sure. Eight eighteen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Okay, uh, we have a continued hearing, a notice of intent request from David and Amy Tavaris at thirty ninety-three Elm Street. Um, it's a garage within a hundred-foot buffer zone of a delineated vegetated wetland.
Where is he? Bob, Bob's not here. Are you here for them?
What is this for? Is this, we, we live on Money Cove?
No, no, no. This is three oh nine three Elm-
Elm Street.
No. Okay, we'll have to-
Right down the end toward Somerset.
We'll have to continue that. Bob must have forgot about the meeting.
Okay, a motion to continue?
Well, I couldn't hear what she said.
Didn't show up. The agent did not show up.
Who was the agent?
Proline.
Proline.
Bob Barabee.
Okay.
I make a motion, we continue, uh, the Tavaris project on Elm Street till eight eighteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed. Okay, we have a new hearing of a notice of intent, twenty forty County Street. Um, it's a DEP file number, we don't, oh, SE seventeen, uh, dash four six two. It's, uh-
Four six zero, right? It's-
I get zero four six two.
Okay, I'll have to look that one up. I have four six zero.
Okay, um, it's, um, restoration of a disturbed area in the buffer zone.
Okay, we have to op, open that and continue it because a legal notice did not get placed. The abutter's notices did, but the legal notice didn't get placed. We had some trouble with the Taunton Gazette.
Okay, is anyone here for that hearing?
Okay. You're here?
Yeah, we got a notice in the mail, so we had to sign for it, so we showed up.
Sure.
Okay, so that's gonna, that will be heard on, uh, August eighteenth.
We can tell you what it is, we just can't have discussion. Uh, basically, they have gotten a little trouble. They are leasing it to someone who would like to do, store some trucks and things there. Um, so we asked them to have it flagged, so they delineate, they had the wetland delineation done. Um, at this point, all is they're doing is trying to restore the twenty-five foot no-touch and get the delineation reviewed by us. They're not proposing any work right now, but you're welcome to come to the next meeting.
Okay, is there a motion to continue?
I make a motion, we continue, uh, twenty forty County Street till eight eighteen.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's gonna be a long meeting.
Okay, we have a new hearing. It's an abbreviated notice of resource area delineation for zero Pleasant Street and, and zero Main Street. What, do we have three streets here and zero Elm Street? Map twenty lots eighty-four, uh, one, eighty-three dash, eighty-four dash three by Zenica.
Hello, just set this up for a minute. So, for the record, Claire Hoguebaum with LEC Environmental Consultants. Sounds extremely crooked. Um-
Again, your name, Ms., please?
Okay, I'm just gonna read that. Uh, Claire Hoguebaum with LEC Environmental Consultants. Um, we're the wetland scientist on the project team for the ANRAD application, uh, to confirm resource area boundaries on three parcels that are commonly owned by Zenica Inc. Um, on the three streets that you noted, Elm Street, Main Street, and Pleasant Street. Um, we were anticipating a very full agenda tonight, so just out of respect for everybody's time, I just wanna keep tonight's presentation short and sweet, since I know it's an ANRAD. Anticipated continuation, so, um, we are anticipating at the August meeting, the next meeting, which I imagine will also be a long one, that a representative from Geosintech will also be joining me to, um, do a more thorough presentation of our delineation, but we really just wanted to open this up and, um, you know, get this process started tonight. So, I'll just briefly go over the site conditions and the resource areas that we're looking to have confirmed. Um, we have the three parcels, uh, two of which are located to the west of County Street and south of Main Street, um, and we have a third parcel that's just north of Money Cove Lane and west of Pleasant Street or west of, um, the Taunton River that we have over here. So, the sort of larger portion of the site next to County Street and Main Street, that's more commonly known as three thirty-three Main Street, I believe in town. Um, this property was formally utilized for, uh, chemical manufacturing between the late eighteen hundreds and the late nineteen hundreds. It's been out of commission pretty much since, I think, nineteen ninety-four. Since then, many of the buildings that were previously on the site associated with that manufacturing have been demolished, but pavement remains in the footprint of those buildings. We have all of the wetland resource areas, so we have bordering vegetated wetlands and a series of isolated vegetated wetlands that are all hatched out. So, as you can see, the site is, um, pretty dense with wetlands. Um, we have, Money Cove Brook enters the site from, um, the reservoir that's just to the west of, um, Elm Street, and it flows in the east direction through the site and, um, cools up, and then ponds in the central portion of the site, and then enters a spillway and continues flowing beneath County Street, and then enters our eastern parcel, which is a more coastally influenced parcel, since there is a bridge crossing on Pleasant Street that connects it to the Taunton River. So, our inland resource areas we're, um, seeking confirmation of are bordering vegetated wetlands, isolated vegetated wetlands, bank to the ponds in the central portion of the site, um, bank mean annual high water to the perennial river. Uh, there's gonna be riverfront area on the site as well, and I believe most of the site is mapped within the flood plain, so we have bordering land subject to flooding as well. Um, and as for our coastal property, um, we have Money Cove Brook continues, so we also have more than mean high water associated with that, since it's more of a tidally influenced river. The riverfront area would extend from that as well onto the site. We have salt marsh, um, and again, flood plain essentially encompasses that entire site. Um, I think I'll just leave it there, because I'm sure there's a lot of other things to go over, but, um, we were informed, we were working with Lisa leading up to tonight, um, since our filing, and I understand that this, since it's such a large site, that it's likely to go to peer review, so, um, uh, and with the, requiring a vote from the commission members, so I'll just leave it here and just, um, ask that if you're going to vote to peer review, if you'd consider granting Lisa, um, authority to allow the peer reviewer to get started, once that's determined ahead of the August meeting, if that's just something that we can sort of help streamline the next meeting and just, um, begin the review process. So, with that, you can ask any questions if you'd like.
Your, your project then is, is gonna be to remove all of the cement works? Is that, uh-
You know, I'm not entirely sure of what project would occur in the future. Um, I know, you know, with the ANRAD, we're just looking to have the wetland boundaries approved, and Geosintech has been on board, I think, since about two thousand fifteen to do site evaluations and determine the extent of contamination on the site. So, the ultimate goal is to remediate the contamination on site, um, and I'm not certain what the, what would occur with the pavement or impervious at this point. I think a lot of the, um, development of that plan is still going on.
Okay, so, but, so right now, you're looking for, uh, wetland delineation by this, okay?
Mm-hmm. We need those lines confirmed, just to honestly determine the extent of wetlands in relation to remediation.
Okay.
Pretty clear.
Yeah. Any questions for anyone here?
No.
Lisa?
Um, just that, because this is going to be an ongoing project, I think that, you know, it'd be wise of us to have an outside consultant looking at this. Um, and so I, I'd recommend BETA, but-
Well, yeah, because, I mean, it is a very large site, and we have, we're gonna have to get it right.
Yeah.
And they have been, uh, upfront on everything. Okay, uh, do we have anyone in the audience? Yes.
So, what are they trying to do?
Right now, this, right now, this is a wetland delineation request.
Yeah. What does that, what does that mean?
Do you want me to explain it?
Yeah.
Sorry, we, it's on our property, and it's just, we have, it's concerted on the-
What's on your property?
All of this, all connects to us.
I'm on that property.
Which property is yours?
Money Cove Lane two ten.
One of the homes here?
The, the one directly on it, yes.
This one? So, we're not requesting any resource area confirmation here.
Okay.
We're only requesting it on our parcel that's outlined in the black liner.
The left side of it.
On the other side of the rail, where the, where the, where the test holes are.
Test holes.
Yeah, they got, they, they got-
They get, they do have test holes.
There's test holes over there.
But all is there-
They're cleared with you.
All is they're requesting from us is for us to review the wetland edge, so they marked the wetland edge out there, LEC did. They hung flags to mark the wetland edge, and there's different wetlands out there, so like she was saying, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's all different wet, kinds of wetlands, coastal and inland, right, correct? Um, so, what they want us to do is approve that, um, but before we do that, we may go out to have a consultant look at it, to review it thoroughly.
But they're just gonna flag it?
They're not doing, they're not doing any work. This is so they can figure out where the wetlands are and where the uplands are, and then they can, from what I understand, clean up the site eventually.
If there is an outside consultant propped in, will we be notified and given the opportunity to get your any findings or-
Just through this, yeah.
So, next meeting would be eighteen?
Yeah, there's a high, you might wanna check with me, but there's a high likelihood they wouldn't have the review by then, so, you know. You might wanna email me.
Okay.
Nancy?
Nancy Gulat, Chairman, Dayton Stormwater Committee. Um, first thing that needs to be corrected is the name of the brook is the Sally Richmond Brook. It is not the Money Cove Brook. That's even shown on the map over there, and if anyone reads to see your newsletter, that was an historical article that clearly said that. That is the Sally Richmond Brook. There's no Money Cove Brook. Now, the last conversation that I was with Lieutenant and I had with the engineering company that had the contract for the cleanup of the former AstroZeneca site, he's the company, he was, we met with him when they were putting in the test wells.
Okay.
The last report we had was- The last report we had was, there will be no cleanup on site because they were gonna let it go back to Mother Nature. They will continue to do, check the test wells for pollution, but there was no plan to touch anything over there. The whole thing, we were told, is a no-touch area. As a matter of fact, all of the property belonging to AstroZenica in this town, some of which has been donated to the town of Dayton and now belongs to us, has a condition in it that can be no digging on site. Now, obviously, the land we've accepted, as it is, some of this had tonne leagues done on it, okay, just to protect us. They were not deep tests. They were enough to protect the town because the agreement is there'll be no digging. So that's an issue that needs to be cleared up because there have been people that approached me about, can that land be the parking lot, the big parking lot that's across from...
Oh, the, the one on...
The one on Main Street. Can that be turned into a business site? And I said, as far as I know, it's a no-touch area. So I think for the benefit of the town and all the people, they need to know that. Again, if there are plans to do something on that site, I'd be interested in knowing, when did the no-touch zone change and why is it now being required? Our understanding was that the initial work alone to do all the tests, mock everything and was over a million dollars, and at the cleanup site and the work would be millions of dollars because it's an EPA site. So I'd like to know, when did things change and now they, why do they now plan to clean it up as opposed to just let, let it go back to Mother Nature?
First of all, Nancy, some of that's gotta be cleaned up, otherwise the lower half of Main Street's gonna be flooded.
No, not necessarily. We went through this, there's a, I don't know if you know, there's a drainage line in there. The town put in, the town put in a drainage line that goes from Main Street all the way down.
It doesn't go, it doesn't go all the way through the property because it backs up. If you're sitting on 138, if you're sitting on 138, pull up just past where PB Laston Station was. You look to the right, you look to the right, there's an old willow tree out there. That was all dry ground. You can't even get anywhere near that because there's an easement through there, an open sluice way for water, the drains all the way back from where the auction is, where the auction is, all the way down through to Muddy Cove.
And I know what you mean. I'm very familiar with the property that Paul Laston, but what I will say to you is, if you drive down 138 and stop right where Paul Laston Chevrolet was, there's a big wide grassy strip. That is a big drainage system that...
That doesn't take care of everything behind it, Nancy.
It goes up Main Street and crosses.
It doesn't take care of behind it.
I'm not here to discuss where it goes. I'm here to ask questions so when they come back from a stormwater perspective, we understand what's going on. How many square feet, after delineating this, do you know if there's gonna be a cleanup? How many square feet are gonna be disturbed?
I don't have that answer for you, again, because, one, we don't have these lines approved, and, two, the determination of any future remediation activities is still very much...
Of the year.
Yes. That's, there's a lot of other factors to take into consideration.
Then one other thing I have is that if you disturb, they disturb in the cleanup more than 35,000 square feet. This needs to come before the stormwater committee.
Of course, yes, that's...
Nancy, right now, their motion are there, they're here for delineation only. They have not proposed any cleanup. They have not, it's a delineation.
I understand that.
I know you wanna deal with that.
I have no problem with delineation. When she talked about a cleanup and AstroZenica's engineer told us they'd never touch it, that's what made me think about, where did it come from? So all I'm asking is...
Well, she can go back to them.
Yeah, exactly.
And so they can research past events and from there make a decision of what they wish to do.
Right, yeah, because it's been designated EPA cleanup site. We all know that, so, thank you.
Okay. We need funding for, for BETA then.
Chairman, excuse me, one other thing. When you talked about where the Cove, Sally Richmond Brook goes through the Cove and out into the river, that bridge on Pleasant Street is going to be replaced.
Okay.
And so one of the other things we're gonna need, when the time comes, there's probably gonna be land-taking easements, but that's down the road, but that bridge is scheduled for replacement, if we can get it funded.
Okay, thank you for the input on that.
Claire, I just want to let you know, I sat in a meeting, a site visit, on a very hot morning this week.
Oh, gosh.
With the town administrator and representatives from Zenica and the geotechnical company. And all this information was disseminated to them, that, that, so...
So they're aware of all of that.
Yeah.
We don't have to try to fumble and...
And they're gonna be communicating with the town, yeah.
Hey, Charlie, you had your hand up?
No, I was just telling her that she's there, but my hand will be up, so...
Okay, all right. We're gonna need a peer review.
Yeah.
And I recommend BETA.
Okay.
Peer review.
Okay, so make, make a motion and maybe in a sum of money...
I don't know, but we just have to get a peer review, get a peer reviewer, and then we'll get a quote, whatever we're gonna get.
Okay, is there a second to hire BETA as our peer review?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we can contact Lisa.
You want me to email?
She can contact BETA, and they will have an idea of funding for the project, which will go into...
Yeah, so are you open to, once they sort of submit their idea of the funding, that we could sort of work with authorizing that ahead of the next meeting, or would you...
No, you can do that.
Okay.
Yes, because we just...
Lisa can handle that part of it.
Okay, so then I guess at this point, we'll still, we'll continue to the August 18th and anticipate to have a Geosyntec representative there so we can...
And I'll make a motion to continue the hearing till August, whatever, 18.
18.
Is there a second to continue?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that has questions on...
Can I just get this emailed off? So that way I can...
It's right on the town website.
Okay.
Conservation Commission.
Okay.
Lisa Caladonia.
But I think I have a card here.
Sorry, I think I...
What is, what is that, what's that G account called? What number?
What's that?
What's the G account called?
53G.
53G.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Yeah, well, no problem.
Got any more?
I mean, I'll do it for you.
Okay. Okay, was there a motion to continue to the 18th? Charlie, did you make a motion to continue?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Did it?
Okay.
Claire, do you know if the Dropbox link is still good or not?
Sure, you can put, email me if it's not, and we'll recover.
All right.
Okay, discussed request for certificate of compliance by Mark Mason of Eastside Development for 1008 Rowland Drive, MAP 13 lot 132, with a file number of 17-450.
I, I told them they did not have to show up to our meeting for this. This was a septic repair. I conducted a site visit, let's see, with the owner, with the new owner anyway, Mark Mason, and I conducted that on July 11. The site is stabilized, pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Let's see if you can sign it.
Okay, a motion to issue a certificate of compliance?
I make a motion, a, for certificate of compliance for Mark Mason, Eastside Development.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed. Okay, now we have a request...
You wanna sign it?
Yes, I gotta sign. Did you say it yet?
No, I didn't. You could need, I need your pen when you get done.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'm gonna continue one while we're signing that. Okay, we discuss and vote to approve BETA peer review, number one, in the amount of $10,400 for Forest Hills Development. Is that a 53G?
I'm not sure what the 53G account is, what the total is right now. Lisa probably...
Lisa, the accountant never sent anything to me. Why don't you send it to you?
Oh, yeah, she sent me the budget, full budget number.
What do we have in the 53G?
I forwarded it to you.
Oh, I, I never, I never saw it.
Oh, I'll send it again.
Okay.
Is there enough money to, I mean, to handle her new?
Honestly, I don't know the budgets, guys. I have no idea what's going on. I don't, I don't have the dollars. Should I pay?
I mean, if you don't have enough money to pay it, we shouldn't be voting on it.
The new project, let me see.
What is this? Oh, that must be Lisa's.
Did the guy sign it?
I think we're all intact here, Lisa, I hope.
Okay, well, in order to, it's gonna take a minute for me to look that up because...
Okay, all right. That's for Lisa. I think, no, this, oh, okay.
Last Thursday, I sent it to, she sent it to me and Charlie, and I thought I forwarded it to you, Jim, but let me see, I did forward it to you, but let me, let me take a look at it here. Charlie, do you know what the count, account number is?
Oh, maybe you did send that, and I didn't have a clue. I didn't have a clue on what it was.
I don't see which professional technician.
I don't see that. Save my spot, though.
It's over here. Yeah, she has to show us. She's gonna show us the amounts. That's weird. There's no amount.
If we vote, and would have to have two votes, if insufficient funds to, to vote an additional sum of money from...
And a wide filing fee or whatever.
No.
Always have money in there, right?
Do you have a regular?
Printout?
Amount, yeah.
Not here.
Oh, I didn't think to check.
Yeah, I don't have a year. I can look back and see, I had an email to...
No, I remember seeing that, that you did send it, but I couldn't really access anything to know what it was, what all those numbers were.
Yeah, okay, let me see. I'll look that up. Oh, I just have it flagged on.
Do you have a regular budget there?
Right.
Because this, this would all come under 53G because this is...
Got it. All right, professional technician. FY, it'll be just for you 23, right? Oh, this is just for you 22. It's 23, right? Office for you when it's 23, correct? Not 22, we already went through that, right?
Yes.
Yeah, but the 53Gs are not, they roll over.
Oh, but then it's not attached to us. You can't send on the numbers, it's not...
Okay, well, we can vote on it, and then we can work on it afterwards.
Yeah, exactly.
Do we have a motion to pay LISA for their peer review in the amount of $10,400?
You do. So move.
Okay, motion made?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed. Okay, the next one is to discuss and vote appointment of commission member to Stormwater Committee. Okay, right now, Lisa by contract does attend the Stormwater Committees. What, for any of us others to go would be duplication of effort. What I would like is to have Lisa go to these committees to represent the commission, but to ask the Stormwater Committee to put all of their items that relate to conservation, since not all of them relate to conservation, to put them together, let's say in the beginning, so that Lisa doesn't have to spend all that extra time with topics that don't deal with conservation. So what I, what I would like to, that's what I would like to see, Lisa represent the commission with the Stormwater Committee. I can see that we're gonna have audience participation.
Yes, can they?
No, we'll vote after that.
Mrs. Chairman, when the Board of Selectmen formed the Stormwater Committee, they designated certain committee chairs or department heads as members, and Mr. Fournette...
Okay, I'm gonna start you right there. Everybody on this commission is a volunteer to serve both the town and the state. It is freebie.
SMI.
Over 50 years, over 50 years.
SMI.
I'm nearing 50 years. I do not think that we can be forced to, to join committees that we did not sign up for. End of, end of discussion with me.
May I continue? I want to give you the history because at the time I wasn't selectman.
No, no, I don't think we want that.
Well, then, to cut to the chase...
We are willing to let Lisa become our agent.
Jim, I'd like to hear what Nancy says.
I would, yeah, what I wanted to be, we're here for some time already. Go ahead, Nancy.
Well, there is a member of the board, the chairman is here. He was not on the board at the time, but he has been on the board since, I assume, the position I have now. Initially, the Board of Selectmen set the committee up working with the Board of Health. There were certain major committee chairs, people weren't named by name, they were positions, and department heads that were put on this committee. Representing the Conservation Commission as chairman of your commission was Mr. Fournette. He stepped down as chair of CONCOM. So the question Stormwater has now is, who is going to represent CONCOM, or if no appointed member wants to do it or can do it, then you need to make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen of somebody who could. That could be Lisa. However, when that person is recommended to the Board of Selectmen, and assuming they appoint that person, that person does not pick and choose what they do. Every Stormwater agenda item has to be... Every Stormwater agenda item has to be looked at and acted on by all members. We are not gonna put, this is strictly not the conservation, and she's gone. The agenda is all-inclusive, whether your planning board, or building commissioner, or highway, all of the people that serve. I just want you to keep that in mind. Because, yes, she does attend as a non-voting member, and she is a very valuable person to have there. Because she, she tells us what's happening here that we may not know about, and she can also tell you what's happening at Stormwater. But if your intent is to recommend her to only be there for Stormwater, for, excuse me, conservation-related issues, I say to you, don't do it. It's not acceptable. As you know, we work together, and the last time we were all together on a field visit, when the violations took place, you know, up in the field. No, not there so much. The, the conservation issues off of the solar farm off on Williams Street, okay? When it was discovered, the amount of damage that was done, and vernal pools were involved and all that. The Stormwater Committee, because she was advising us and you were at the site visit, what we said was, we're going to step back for the moment, because this is a real issue for CONCOM because of vernal pools and everything that had happened to the wetlands. We shut that project down. They have since made corrections, planted grass and fixed everything. The only thing they're waiting for is the vernal pools. Now that that's all been corrected, Stormwater again has come forward and say, okay, now we'll take care of it. Obviously, you mentioned the illegal dumping and filling. Because DEP came into that, on that particular site, Stormwater stepped back and said, CONCOM, through Lisa, contacted DEP, let's let them take the lead on that. But we're working together on it. So I just, you know, last night, the planning board had the same issue.
Unrelated, there's gotta be some unrelated issues. She was hired for conservation purposes, and I don't want, I want her doing our work first. And I'm not saying, don't tell, I'm not saying that, that Stormwater isn't important, it certainly is, but there are probably many issues that are unrelated to conservation, and taking her away from the time to do orders of conditions or whatever it may be.
Well, I'm not suggesting you do that.
Okay, well, that's what I'm afraid of.
All I'm saying to you is, a person who is appointed to the Stormwater Committee as a voting member has got to participate in all Stormwater matters. Unless, for example, there's a conflict of interest, which we all know, then you step back. But as chairman of that committee, I'm not gonna allow members saying, hey, I will talk about this, I don't care about that, or I've got too much to do. If that's the intent, then you shouldn't be on the committee. I went to the planning board meeting last night, because when the chairman resigned, we didn't have a place for planning, we didn't have somebody to fill the planning board spot. And really, quite frankly, people worked during the day, and there wasn't a lot of interest to do it. And I said to them, if you are willing to share the appointment, I will certainly accept and recommend that the Selectmen appoint a primary member and an alternate member, so that if the primary member who has voting powers can't attend, the alternate can step in and will have voting power. So what they did was, they are going to recommend to the Selectmen two names, one, if you will, the prime member, and one, the alternate, so that hopefully we will have coverage from the planning board. Now, obviously, the planning board member sitting there is going to hear stuff that relates to CONCOM simply because Stormwater and CONCOM kinda work together. The, the planning board person isn't gonna get up and walk out and say, hey, I don't care about this. This isn't planning board. What, the whole point of the Selectmen putting this committee together was to get cohesiveness and cooperation and communication between all the major boards and departments, so that one board isn't voting one way, and another one's voting another way, and when it comes together, they're in conflict. So this is how we share information.
I certainly understand all of that, and yet, okay, what I am concerned is that we don't require people from Playground to become part of our committee or anything else. And I just wanna caution that I don't want all of Lisa's time to be on Stormwater and leaving the duties that we essentially hired her for, for us. Are you, uh...
Yes.
Okay.
Leonard Hall, chairman of the Dayton Board of Selectmen. Few things. One, Mrs. Caledonia answers to you, the members of the Conservation Commission, to TA Mullin and the Board of Selectmen. You control Ms. Caledonia's schedule. Mrs. Gulat did present this evening a good option, as the planning board did last evening. However, I might add with emphasis, the makeup of the Stormwater Committee rests in the hands of the Board of Selectmen. At our previous meeting, there was a discussion about the reorganization of that committee. A motion was made to table it. The chairman of the board will determine when it goes back on the agenda and how Stormwater's makeup will be going forward. The planning board came up with a pretty interesting twist that I would urge conservation to take a look at and maybe adopt to have two members. Lisa is a very valuable member of Stormwater. Lisa is also an extremely valuable member to the Conservation Commission. And I know in my discussions with Lisa that her plate is overflowing. And we can't clone her, so maybe one of you could also cover some of those meetings in cases where Lisa can't. I think that would help Stormwater. It would help the communication. And building collegiality and teamwork with all the departments in town is good, and it is looked very favorably by the town citizen, the residents of Dayton. Thank you.
Okay, we, we have here before us then to vote an appointment of commission member to Stormwater, to Stormwater Committee. What is your pleasure?
I'm all settled, Lisa, but, you know what I mean, I, I serve on this board, try and do my best, but I'm not dedicated to where this is all I do. And, you know, if you don't like it, the Selectmen have the authority. Tell me to pack my bags. There's nothing but air between me and the door. If you don't want me, I'll leave.
I never said that.
I'm, I'm just stating fact, that's all.
Mr. Chairman?
Would you like to vote someone else on this commission?
Well, no, I would like to, I would like to see Lisa, is she already, it's in there, you have a contract which says that you're going, that you attend Stormwater?
I don't have a contract, but it was in my job description.
It's in your what?
I believe it was in my job description.
Job description, okay. That, that's what I should have...
That I would coordinate with Stormwater. I don't know if it meant be on the committee, but... The question is, though, if I was not to be able to be in attendance, and that would ha, affect them, and they wouldn't have a quorum, it would be great to have someone else as an alternate.
I can, I can be the alternate.
The chances...
Again, I'm, I would be relying on you to be doing, uh...
Of course.
Yeah.
Or you could write the orders of condition.
No, I don't think so. I don't think so.
You sure?
While we're still having a discussion here, does anyone else, Bill, you wanna?
Oh, whatever you guys decide, I'll vote yes.
Do you have any comment?
No, I just wondered if Bill is interested in continuing to represent the commission on the Stormwater Committee.
I'll do whatever you guys like me to do.
Wanna be a second alternate, Bill, or split it between you and Jim, or not? No pressure.
No, I'll, I'll, like I said, whatever you, whatever the commission decides, I will vote.
It's up to you, it's up to you, too, Bill.
No, it's not up to me. It's up to the commission. The commission has to vote.
You're busy. Another thing, that's fine.
What this is all about, though. Go ahead, Jim. Carry on. You're doing great.
What I was also going to tell you was, when I became a member of the Stormwater Committee, I was a selectman. And one of the positions is, a member of the Board of Selectmen will serve. Well, obviously, I'm not a selectman, so the Board of Selectmen appointed me to be their representative. That's why I'm still on that committee. Each year, they make appointments. Now, the other thing is, the only reason I talked about the original structure was, Bill was automatically on because he was chairman of the CONCOM. He's not chairman now, but you can also say, if he is willing, that although he's not the chairman, he is the rep. If Lisa is appointed an alternate for Bill, that means when Bill is present, he votes. When Bill is not present and can't make a meeting, she can vote. But I, in all honesty, serving, if Lisa is serving on the Stormwater Committee as a voting member, I don't see her workload increasing, because the, she would be, in effect, stepping in for Bill. Bill's not going home and writing orders and doing all that stuff. It's more important that he is, excuse me, he, she, is physically present to hear the discussion, to offer an opinion, to give us information, and then to, to vote to help us make decisions. I don't see her workload increasing. I just don't. Because if she's replacing him, he's not doing that now. So something to consider.
Okay, as I said, I'd be willing to be the, the alternate. Certainly Lisa will be there doing most of the time, and she would have to contact me. So we have a vote to see, to have Lisa as, as our representative? Is there a motion to make Lisa our representative?
I make a motion that Lisa Caledonia be a Stormwater Committee appointee.
Is there a second?
Seeing it's such a terrible thing, I will volunteer to be your representative, our representative on your commission, or committee.
And that's fine. Right now, I'm uncomfortable, because I'm looking at the man who has served since we were formed.
It's apparent that Bill is retired from this committee, no, chair?
Only the chair. He's still a member. And if Bill says, I can't do it anymore, Nancy, I'm upset, but I'm sitting here looking at him saying, he's been a valuable member, although he's not chairman.
I just volunteered.
Yeah, I know you did.
Problem solved.
I'm uncomfortable, because I feel like he's being excluded, and I don't wanna put him on the list.
Oh, I asked him, I asked him if he wanted. Didn't I not, Bill?
What, uh?
I asked if you wanted to be an alternate to Lisa. Didn't I ask you that?
You did, and I said I will vote whatever, I would vote with, with the commission.
There you go. We didn't exclude him. I asked him.
Well, then, my question is, is there a chance you would consider being the representative and continue in the role you were?
That, this is the commission's vote.
This is a discussion. I'm asking the gentleman who currently holds the position.
But Charlie was talking a moment ago, and...
I make a motion that I represent the commission in the Stormwater Committee.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll put you on the list.
Done.
Now, it isn't a done deal. Now, you've gotta notify the Board of Selectmen ASAP, because this should be on the agenda for Wednesday's meeting, because they've gotta make the appointment. So I'm off the hook?
I'm sorry.
Am I an alternate? What's the vote? Am I off the hook? You're in the same position you're in now. You come as you can, and you're not holding on. Not, you're not holding a ten big.
Any other motion for this?
No, no.
Okay.
No, 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 just, you've gotta notify the Board of Selectmen.
You're not invited tonight. I have a meeting tomorrow. We'll get it on the agenda, because we're doing the agenda tomorrow. I know it's, we're, we're working. We have a full day tomorrow.
I have trouble hearing you, Lenny.
He wants an email tonight, Charlie. Can you write an email, or Jim?
Oh, Jim, you can write it on this page. Just sign it. You're the chairman?
Yep, okay.
I have, I have blank paper.
Okay.
And then this way you'll, um, you'll be attending. You have to get it Monday within 48 hours of the meeting to have it on the agenda.
Okay, let's, Lisa, you're gonna talk about the enforcement audit at Zero Horton Street?
Okay, yes. Well, to date, we haven't received any new information, but I guess some representative is here from Goddard Consulting.
Yeah, hi, Ryan Rosine from Goddard Consulting. Tom, didn't send you the updated restoration plan? No? Okay. I'm sorry about that. I, I thought he did.
Let me look.
That's dated July 7th?
Oh, jeez, you know?
Okay. Well, I have, I have copies for the board if they would like to look.
Tom?
You?
Oh. Yep, he did, and I didn't see it.
No worries. Yeah, so at the last meeting, we had proposed to, we came before you with a plan to, that just showed revegetation, restoration of the 25-foot buffer zone. This plan now shows the full 100-foot buffer zone that was disturbed, restored. So the first couple pages show the details of how we plan to restore the buffer zone, and then there's a couple maps in there that show the area of disturbance and what we'll be seeding with, and the last two pages are the seed mixes that we're gonna use.
Ryan, slow down just a minute.
Oh, yep.
We've got so many projects at Zero Horton Street going on. I'd like to know exactly where this spot is.
Yeah, so that's, um, it's right, what's the name of the street that comes right up?
Smith.
That's...
Smith, yeah. So, yeah, there was clearing done within the 100-foot buffer zone, and so we're restoring...
So it's, it's at the end of Smith and Horton?
Yes.
To the northeast. To the northeast of Smith Street.
Just a little northeast, Bill.
Okay.
And there's a riverfront there, too. I just wanted to clarify. There is a riverfront.
I'm, I'm familiar with everything now.
Yep, so, so, yeah, so last, last time we were here, we had just, the plan showed just the 25-foot buffer zone with 50 trees and shrubs and a wetland seed mix. And you guys requested that we come back with the full 100-foot buffer zone that was disturbed to be seeded and to be restored. So we're proposing a conservation and wildlife seed mix in the, between the 25-foot and the 100-foot buffer zone. This will improve the area, you know, as, over existing conditions. And there will be some sort of proposal in the next few months of some work to go on there that will come before you again. So that's why we're proposing the seed mix and not all the trees and shrubs that are within the 100-foot buffer zone. We're just, the, the trees and shrubs and seed mix will go in the 25-foot buffer zone, and the seed mix will go, the other seed mix will go within the rest of the buffer zone. If the commission has any questions, I'd be happy to answer. And the last two pages, like I said, are spec sheets from New England Wetland Plants that show all the, the plants that are included in the seed mixes. And there is, we're going to do two years of monitoring to ensure that the restoration area is successful in establishment.
I have no question.
So, yeah, we're just seeking approval this evening to get this plan approved. But seeding and restoration won't happen until the middle of September or later, depending on drought conditions and everything like that, so.
Lisa, do you have any questions?
Well, this is the first time I'm looking at this, unfortunately.
Now, was Phil brought into the site, or was it just a disruption of trees?
I think it was just disruption of trees. There might have been one stockpile of where they just pushed some, pushed some dirt from, in the area. But that is, I believe step one or two is to remove any large stockpiles of any materials that might have been pushed around. And then flatten out the whole area.
I, I have one concern about this, these maps, so. That is a perennial stream, and it does have a riverfront. However, none of your legends depict a riverfront. The legends should depict a riverfront. And there should be discussion in this restoration plan that this is an ORW. Do you know if he had anything in there?
Uh, it is.
I know it's an ORW.
I, I know it is, too, yes, yeah. I don't think it's actually on the plan. There was another map that we had. I don't think it's shown on there, but it is, yeah, it is in an ORW.
Yeah, I would like, I would like that to be, those modifications to make. Seeing if I have the other.
I'm not, I don't quite know if the riverfront area extends all the way into this area.
Okay.
Because the resources areas haven't been confirmed. We'd be looking to do that at a later time.
You're proposing to remove materials with that be before any restoration takes place?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, any of the stockpile, any of like, large materials that are.
So that would be done prior to restoration?
Yep, and then after that, yeah, once, once any large piles are removed or flattened out, then the whole area will be flattened out, loam will be brought in if needed, and then the area will be planted with the shrubs and seed mix to stabilize the area as soon as possible.
I do appreciate, you did add a note that this restoration plan does not confirm the wetland line, and abbreviated notice of restoration area delineation should be filed to confirm the wetland line.
Yeah, because we are, they're, the owner of the property is planning on doing work there in the near future. I'm not sure what it is, and so I think that's why the clearing in the first place took place in the first place. So we're just looking to restore it for now, and then we'll come back before the commission with plans.
Yeah.
Will you be supervising this project?
Yes, yes. One of our, somebody from Goddard, wetland scientist, will be supervising that, as, as stated in the plan.
Okay, where is the discussion about the supervision? Do you know which page?
Uh, I don't have it in front of me. I think it's, it's right in the beginning. I think it's step one or before step one. So I don't have another copy of the plan in front of me, so. In every restoration plan that we do, wetland sci, wetland scientists supervise the installation and work, all the work that's done, to ensure it's done properly and, and the resource areas aren't further impacted.
Seasonal monitoring reports.
For two years. We go in the spring and the fall.
Yeah.
You know, do all the.
But he talks about until a COC is issued by the Conservation Commission. Well, you won't get a COC for this.
Right, so we'll do the two years of monitoring, and then if we get, have an NOI or whatever, then obviously, once that.
You just said something a minute or two ago that seems to be contradictory, that after you get this done, the owner is going to come back and try to do whatever.
Well, I'm not sure exactly what, but a portion of that 100-foot buffer zone may, you know, be within the limit of work of whatever he's proposing in the future. But you guys, this enforcement order, so we're going to restore the area, and then if, if a proposal comes before you for work, then that will be discussed at that point. So, we're just, we're just trying to restore the area so that it's, you know, better than the conditions right now.
Yeah, we issued an enforcement order, so they want us to eventually lift the enforcement order. We issued the enforcement order because they went out and perked, tried to perk it without clarification as to where the resources were, and we told them they had to stop.
Okay, so what we have now is, we need to accept this plan, and then to move forward with, with the restoration. Is there a motion to accept the plan for restoration at zero?
So moved.
Motion made? You second it?
Yeah, I second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate the time.
Thank you. Do you have paper copies?
Um, I gave four of them.
Okay.
Is that all right, or do you want me to get?
Yeah, no, that's fine, I'm just going to grab one of them when they're done. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, 2050 Horton Street?
Okay, um, so I'm awaiting the NOI for that one, that's, um.
Burma?
Yes. Um, I have not heard anything from them, so maybe we should follow up.
Bill, I mean, Burma?
Yeah. So that one requires follow-up.
Okay, um, 578 Hart Street?
Um, sorry, that one had a brief conversation with Proline. That's it.
Okay, Cedar Street?
So Cedar Street, um, here we are. At your last meeting, it was discussed that you would have something in hand prior to this meeting. When we didn't receive anything by our deadline, Charlie and I had a conversation and decided we were going to send them a letter. So we sent them a certified letter. Following up, saying we've, we've issued a notice of violation, and that was on April 8th, 2021. Despite the fact we've requested a restoration plan via email and in-person at meetings multiple times, we have still not received one. Should the Conservation Commission not receive a restoration plan for well and alterations on your property by August 4th, we will issue an enforcement order. Failure to comply with this letter may constitute grounds for enforcement order and additional legal action. So I also sent a copy to their consultant who is here, John Souza. They both got received certified mail.
The reason I couldn't find it when I was looking at, you didn't say Cedar Street.
No, I, yeah, it's Cedar, not, uh, so we, we tried to file a notice of intent that was not accepted. The notice of intent also had the restoration and mitigation within it. So we want to file the notice of intent to cure the issues at hand, and also move the project forward.
Okay, so you're trying to do two jobs with one stone?
Yes.
And what, uh, what we're looking at here is to accomplish one thing at a time without combining them for the sake of, of, to keep everything in order on our part, to, to see what restoration is going to happen, and, and then file a notice of intent.
So basically you're making my client duplicate efforts at this point. Because under a notice of intent, you can cure a violation order as well within the notice of intent. So we're filing a notice of intent to cure the violation, and also allow him to do the work at the same time, which can be accomplished all at once instead of twice.
Has, has that been submitted?
We tried to submit it, and it was returned to us.
I rejected it.
So.
Because I had told the applicant in the spring of 2021, when he told me he was going to build an addition, that he couldn't file at the same time, it needed to be separate. We needed to deal with the restoration at hand, which should have come in in 2021, and it never did.
So here it's almost more of a delay tactic on the part of the homeowner.
Well, I wasn't involved at that point in time, but I do know that within the Wetlands Protection Act, that you can file a notice of intent to cure a violation notice. So we are therefore putting forth the notice of intent to cure the violation as well as to further the work as well. So, I mean.
Why is this a duplication of effort? Are you going to undo what, what you're going to restore?
Uh, eventually it may, because this is also going into Chapter 61A, the property.
May I, may I propose that no notice of intent be filed for the restoration, and the restoration plan be filed with us, approved, and the restoration plan commence, and then we see where that goes before we file a notice of intent for the addition. We don't have to receive a notice of intent, just like we just did for Pavo, I mean, not Pavo, I'm sorry. Mr. Ribero?
Well, here, here lies the issue with the Wetlands Protection Act. If I submit a notice of intent either through your admin or through the clerk of the town, you have 21, uh, uh, days to hear me, regardless of anything else that's going on, on the property. We have done multiple of these in other towns that we have cured both violation and also other work within a notice of intent. So we are currently proposing to submit a notice of intent to cure the violation and not waste another three to four months on top of everything else that's already happened.
I'm pretty sure he's right.
It's, it's a large, a large violation that will take possibly take a year.
That my client has not, was not all his doing. He purchased the property with a lot of violations already on it as well. And if you remember the presentation I gave here a few weeks ago that outlined a lot of the photographs showing that it even had a horse riding ring and pastures already there previously. The land has been utilized and utilized well, and has been utilized in an agricultural sense for a long time. So it's not a new violation by any means.
Well, there are new violations.
There are a few new violations, yes, I agree with that wholeheartedly. But many violations were already there. I mean, there's stuff in the back right corner that's been there for eons.
Lisa, if we were to accept his application.
No, seven ten.
No, seven ten, okay. And, and then put it in the order, sequential order of what has to be done.
Yeah, a building permit couldn't be issued until the restoration is complete. I'm fine with that.
And that, and that way you were going to get restoration done first. No building permit will be issued until after you get a certificate of compliance on restoration, and you get your two filings together.
I now sign off on the building permit, so that's a good procedure.
All right, we'll put in for the NOI.
You guys all?
Yep.
Yeah, I know, we'll be taking care of the thing.
And so, just, our next meeting is the 18th.
Yep.
August 18th. Um, I want to, understood that if you, well, the office is closed tomorrow.
Right, and then you have until, I believe, what?
So, uh, you know, so it might be 23 days or something like that.
Yeah, that's fine. I, I mean.
Well, if you submit it after, make sure that 21 days is met.
Right.
That we don't have to dicker about lawfully.
Yeah.
I, I do have a concern. The alterations seem to exceed the Army Corps. So the alterations that are out there.
The authorization exceeds what?
Frank conversation about this. Is this going to trigger an Army Corps permit? Because I don't want that to happen.
Right now, no.
Okay.
What did you say?
The pre.
No, no, the Army Corps isn't required for the restoration.
It's not larger than, is that what you're saying?
It's, it's, it's not, it doesn't meet the criteria for the Army Corps.
Okay, that's good to hear.
So you're going to follow in NOI?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we, so you know how we're going to approach it? It's going to be restoration first, and then prior to your getting a building permit.
It'll be in order condition.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll all end up being in the order, so.
Okay.
All right. All right, thank you.
We may need another meeting in August.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So that's eight?
Eight eighteen.
Okay, Hart Street, no, we did that one. County Street, 2371?
Okay, yeah, we should be hearing back from DEP soon with a meeting date. We're going to be having a meeting regarding that.
Okay.
I'll keep you guys updated on that.
1035 Williams?
Um, okay, so he retained Outback Engineering, and they're trying to set up a site visit with me. So, right now, the ball is actually going to go back in my court because Greg Drake is going on vacation next week, so, um, we'll have a site visit the following week.
2040 Coney Street?
I'm sorry, I don't have 2040 on my list. 2040.
This is violation update?
Okay, they did file the notice of intent, we put them on hold, we continued them to the next meeting because a legal ad wasn't placed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, 1861 Somerset Avenue?
Yes, skip.
Seventeen sixty-three Wellington.
Sorry, 1763 Wellington?
Yeah, that site, the flagging is done, and they retained Lighthouse Engineering to do the survey. So we should be seeing something from them, hopefully not by August 4th, because the meeting's going to go until midnight.
Okay.
Uh, 1861 Somerset Avenue?
Yep, same thing. They, they are working with, I believe, Lighthouse. That site, I don't know if you take a drive by there. It's the second house on the left, the one right before the recreation area. That house actually started clearing in the buffer zone to the BBW.
Okay, that's beyond the police station on the corner.
And, 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 yep. Basically, you know, they want to add, they want to add some fill, maybe level some things off over there. And I told them they got to wait and file.
Okay. Clearways over?
Okay, they are doing pretty good with submitting weekly inspection reports. We did get one on July 14th. So, actually, did we get one more recently? I think I forwarded you guys another one from a couple of days ago.
July 19th.
July 19th, okay. So the most recent one is the 19th and the site has been cleared. They have seeded the disturbed areas with a New England conservation mix and they're planning on planting and doing restoration in the fall. All the erosion controls are in and the site is almost, I believe, completely cleared. The next step will be for them to work with the stormwater committee, I'm sorry, the health agent and the stormwater committee to figure out...
They cleaned up that violation within the vernal pool?
Well, they have to wait until the fall to do that because they didn't, we didn't want them to disturb the species.
I thought there'd be no water in it now, they could do it now.
We don't want them to plant right now. I want them to wait a little bit to plant.
It's so, it's so dry, Bill, I...
I know it, it's so dry. But if they're going to do, if they're going to dredge material out of a vernal pool, now is the time to do it. It's dry.
It's actually not dry if you look at the inspection report. Let me see.
Okay.
Let's, let's take a look at it, hold on. I forwarded it to you guys. From Joseph.
Keep it right on rolling, we're doing good.
Yeah, he didn't, he didn't take picture that side. Okay, um, next.
Next, okay, you want Zero William Street?
Okay, so I spoke with the owner today as well. She did already hire a wetland scientist. I did take a look at the part of the line that's near where they want to perk. It's just one house, but they did disturb, they had disturbance in the buffer. So I said, hey, what are you doing? And there's disturbance in the wetland. So I told her I agreed with the wetland line that's adjacent to where the perks are going to be. They could move forward with scheduling the perks. However, they need some erosion controls in there and they're going to need some sort of restoration, so we'll...
They still have to be 100 feet away from the...
Yeah, they will be, yeah.
Okay, Horton Street?
Yeah, so with that one, I sent it out certified. It never, it did get received by them, but I never heard back from them. Apparently, it's owned by the bank now and the building inspector told me that he does have their contact information. The bank's been allowing them to clean up the site and live there, but they don't own it anymore. It's kind of a complicated mess, but I'm going to get in touch with the bank.
Okay. Robert Nollet? Okay.
Public input?
The knees have been there, huh, for a long time?
Robert Nollet, 2560 Maple Swamp Road.
Is that address again, Mr. Nollet?
2560, 2560. Talked to Mr. Fadet and I talked to Mr. fellow.
Yes, we talked.
Just yet.
You're on the agenda.
Right.
Kept my word.
I have one situation that I'd like to get cleared up if I possibly could as soon as possible. I have a 14-acre lot for sale, okay? These are the two gentlemen here that are purchasing it. We've been working on it for like six months now, but I bet you that, they didn't bring all one. I thought this was a small, this is my problem.
We just, we just...
When you say working on it, what do you mean by that?
Working on...
You said you've been working on it, what do you mean by...
Working on selling.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so it's got to be, is this one here? This one here?
Yeah.
Okay.
What it is, right there.
You see? I can see.
This property right here, my son's house here, this is my house here. We had this grandfather, I'm not grandfather. Various, various, this is the driveway to come up to the lot, okay? This lot goes all here. Okay, now, this lot right here, Lisa had flagged it as wetlands.
I did not.
That's what I was told by...
Nope, I did not flag anything. Brandon Faniff asked me to come out to the site. Asked me to, asked me to look at it to see if it was a vernal pool, if I would consider it a vernal pool. And I went out and I looked at it with him and I said, I don't think it's a vernal pool, but it's definitely a wetland. So we looked around, we agreed, the vegetation, he dug some holes. It showed evidence of hydrology and he said, I, it's a wetland, wetland, a wetland. So we told Mr. Nollet, well, at a meeting, I had a meeting with...
Over the phone?
Yep, the adminis, town administrator and the health agent and the building inspector. We all had a meeting with Mr. Nollet and explained to him that he would need to file for this project. I did not flag your site.
You need to file for this project.
You need to have a delineation, file with the Conservation Commission for work.
Well, that's what...
The AMRA.
The AMRA, right? That's, that's, well...
Mr. Nollet?
Yes.
When you turn your back, I can't read your lips.
I'm sorry, sir.
That's okay.
Well, my problem is, is that...
They don't have any N-RAD yet.
They what?
We don't have the N-RAD yet. Nope, we don't.
It's done. What's his name?
Brandon?
Brandon is in Europe.
Oh, lucky him.
We've been trying, we've been trying to get ahold of him. He did not flag it as wetlands on the...
Oh, well, he and I were out there and we looked at it together and we both thought it was a wetland.
We, we looked at, young Tony was with me, I was with Brad and he had his guy with him.
Brad or Brandon?
Brandon, I'm sorry, Brandon. And we took seven test holes in that area and not one of them even looked like wetlands. So he said...
This is from Brandon?
Yes.
He dug seven holes?
Yes.
None of them, yeah. You look at the soil sample that's in the thing and it's the coloration that tells you whether it's wetlands or not. Do you have anything from Brandon in writing?
Not yet. He's, like you said, he's in Europe, he had...
He's going to come back with COVID, so of course, keep your fingers crossed.
This is, this is the area right here.
Yeah, okay, well, I'm not concerned about the area. What I'd like to know is about the test pits that Brandon...
So he's, so what's going to happen is he's, if he's flagging this...
No, he's not flagging it.
You said there was a flag there and she didn't do it. Did you say there was a flag there?
No.
Nobody flagged the area?
I'll tell you, a year ago, I'm just going to explain this to you. A year ago, I had a buyer for it.
You had what?
A buyer for the land.
Okay.
My recent buyers, anyway, he's a Dayton resident, okay? And he wanted to buy the land, so I said, okay, fine. He said, well, I'm going to have it, wetland, wetlands. I said, well, it's been done three times prior. I've had it done three times since I lived here for different reasons, okay? None of that, all this down here is all flagged.
Yeah.
Easy, nothing up top is flagged, nothing's ever been flagged. So I told him, I says, I'll let you flag it, I don't have a problem doing it, but I have to know, we have to sign off to let your people on it. Now, I'm hoping to hear it, he got to do it. I said, the only thing I can request is that you let me know, I'll sign off on it and I want to be there when they do it. He didn't do that and they went ahead and did it, right? And they did put a flag there.
Where?
There, there, right?
That's at the wetland spot that Lisa was talking about.
So then I told, I told him that, I says, you had no right doing that. It's illegal, you didn't get any permission, this and that, right?
Well, how did Brandon get there then?
Wait a minute, let me, let me, okay, that was two, a year ago, okay? When he came along, all right, he's the one that's painting Brandon. They hired, father, son hired Brandon to do it. And we said, okay, fine. So Brandon did it and that's what I'm telling you. Brandon did that, which was in March.
Yeah, they're still stalling around, so.
Can't flag, you can't flag that time of year, so that's the problem.
He didn't flag the...
He recently flagged it.
That's why he...
One at a time, oh, uh-oh. My hearing aid cuts one guy out.
Hopefully it doesn't these guys.
When he did that testing in March, like I said, young Tony was with me and Brandon and his guy at Brandon's state. They took seven holes, they took four holes and he said, no, this doesn't look wetland. This doesn't have anything to do with wetlands. He walked up the driveway to the side of where the house is going, walked around the area. He came back, on the way back, he stopped again and he went deeper in along this way here. He took three more tests and he said, no, it doesn't, and there was no vegetation.
Thing I want to show you. So, so why, what are you here to ask us?
What I want is that the driveway can be done like it is and I don't have to do wetlands. They can't afford $18,000 and I can't afford $18,000 to fix the land. So to take that land, my property is 14.2 acres, all right? I got 62% of that is wetlands that I can't even use and I pay $11,000 a year. The property they're buying, it's got like 45% wetlands. Why should I have to pay $15,000 to put wetlands? She said about 50 by 30 foot driveway, 60, 600 feet long.
I said what?
50 by, Lisa, hang on.
50 by 23, 20 feet that the driveway is and she thought it was 50 feet long. Now Brandon told me that, all right? So we would have to do like 15,000 square feet somewhere else on a property. And he's already got 45 or so and I know I got 60 of wetlands. So why would I pay to do that? And it's not even wetlands anywhere, any paper I got doesn't show wetlands in that area.
Red maple, poison ivy, jewel weed, water stain leaves.
Okay, well, if you've got Brandon...
Soon as he comes home, our problem is time, time's our problem.
Okay, wetlands is our problem.
I understand that.
And so if you hired Brandon, let him fit, I mean, he's not going to be there forever. Not unless he went to Russia and they hijack him.
As long as, as long as Brandon draws up a plan and signs off and stamps it with an engineer's stamp.
Well, Brandon's not...
It doesn't, it doesn't mean that we have to agree with him.
No, I realize that, but if, if he says it's not wetlands, correct? You know, if he's got all the test files, Lisa.
It just, what are these pictures here?
I have just such experience, Lisa.
I haven't seen the thing, I don't know.
I built my son's house right here.
All right, no, let's just, let's just, let's just do the driveway. These pictures are where? Show me where the picture is.
I think you guys are in over your head right now and you're doing something that you don't even have...
This is the one the town made me build, a drainage dam. And that was the one, it's for the French drain that goes all around my son's house. We couldn't bring it out to the road, we couldn't bring it over here to Mr., what'd you call it? He's a selectman now, he lives here. And so we put it down on the mine land and that's the part that she's saying is wetland, right here and right here.
Brandon brought me there to get my opinion.
Let, let, let him finish. Brandon, I think you're going to have to wait till Brandon comes back and...
I have a question I have a potential owner. This is what I'm concerned is that if we, because we hired Brandon, me and my son, and we've got Brandon doing all this work, but if he comes back and says it's not wetlands, she's telling us it's not, he said he did test holes, he's telling us he's got all the paperwork, he's going to submit it. But if you're going to say that it's still wetlands, are we still going to have to prove which one do we, do we as potential owners, which one do we file?
Well, he's going to give, he's going to give us evidence, giving us soil samples and...
But she, but Mr. Nollet is telling us that she's saying she's still going to disagree that it is wetlands. So where do we, where do we at?
So you get a third party, 53 feet.
But I, I don't want to be sitting here more and more...
I want you to prove this is wetlands, that's what I want, because it isn't wetlands.
Guess what? If you filled the site next door and you're draining it off because it drains and Brandon showed me this drains all around the house.
He's got pictures of it, he's got pictures of the drain.
So all the water's draining, where's it going to go?
It goes right down the side of my driveway, throw another culvert down to the back.
And there's a stream that you need to stop working in out there.
I got no stream out there.
Oh, yes, you do.
Where? Where? What stream? You tell me which stream.
There's a stream. In any case...
Where?
The problem, the situation...
It's like the question I asked you on the phone that night. I asked you the question, you said that Brandon took tests out there and Brandon told me he never took a test with you when you were out there.
Yeah, he dug a...
It was all, it was all site work.
I'm sorry, he must have lied. He dug a hole with me, he had his auger, he had his... No, he had his auger. He had, he had his auger.
Well, maybe the thing is...
Let me just say...
On the next meeting, have, have Brandon come here and, and we're going to straighten this out for you.
Because, okay.
Because right now...
The thing is, right now, if they have to put wetlands in, they can't afford it, they can't afford it. They're going back out and buy the house. Then I got to start this whole thing all over again because I'll take that to court before I'll pay to get wetlands and thank you, I'm sorry.
Well, my recommendation is, you know, have a third party look at it.
Who's going to pay for it, Tom?
No, like everybody else?
You would.
Yeah.
I know, I'm saying, I'm just a potential buyer, I don't want, you know, I'm just here to, I'm a potential buyer and I'm going to invest the money, it's not that I don't... I just don't want, I just don't want to accelerate, you know?
You take my pen?
It's the process.
We'll, we'll get this straightened out.
Thank you.
You know, we, you know, we want to help you out, but Brandon's going to be the key to this. Brandon's going to be the key.
Well, he's already told him and his man that it is the wetlands and he didn't flag it this last time he did it.
Do you have stakes in the ground?
I'll show you anything anytime you want.
Is it marked?
The boundaries are marked for the driveway.
That's what I mean.
But you come right off the road and it's right there.
Okay, so, so you're going, you're going to Maple Street, Oak Street bends left, Maple Swamp, Maple Swamp goes straight. So up here is the, is the ball field. You're before the ball field.
I'm on the new side of the ball field. If you came down New Street...
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
All right, you come down New Street on Maple Swamp Road, there's a sharp bend in the road right there. That, you'll see that, there's a sign there, I'm laying for sale. That's my driveway on the right, in the next line.
Okay, all right, I, I know the, I know the area, I haven't been in that.
I'll meet anybody who owns anything you want, anytime you want.
Are you going to get a perk?
Okay, all right, shall we, okay?
Hey, that's my pen. I'm looking for it, I'm looking for it, I'm looking for it. I think I'm going crazy on this email.
We're going to determine a price on, on what we're going to charge people for these things, these contractors to put them on... We've given a price on what we're going to charge people for these things, these contractors to put them on their property.
We'll get a picture.
What?
They don't have enough to fill all.
That what you're talking about? No, no, they started coming in. Okay, Lisa, okay, we're going to move on here. Lisa, I'm going to go to one, the last item here. We have our signs here for notification to put on trees or whatever.
Yeah, it's great.
Is this all that came in?
No, no, we have boxes.
Okay, all right, so.
Tom Ferry's handling the boxes.
We were talking about, of course, selling them to contractors to mark the 25-foot buffer zone or the, or the wetlands.
Right.
Now, what we have to do is, I guess, a simple division on, on how much they cost us. Because if I'm correct, we cannot make a profit on them or it's got to be within pennies or something. Is it one or $2? I, I forget what we had talked about.
We paid a dollar, right? Well, actually, we get a discount, so we'll have to look back at the.
Okay, all right, so our next meeting then, we'll have to have Charlie for the agenda then to set a price for our display markers, for wetland display markers.
Actually, it's so full, why don't we try to do it right now?
Okay. I know we got thousands of them and, of course, we paid thousands. And I'm going to take some of those and I'm going to start putting them on conservation land.
Great.
Don't do any disturbances.
Oh, we did have a situation where they shipped the wrong number and I have to respond to her. So I ordered the exact quantities and paid the exact amount, but their factory that makes custom orders and doesn't keep anything on the shelf. Sometimes the machines act up, so she's apologizing that 1,950 pieces of the conservation markers were shipped, but we ordered 2,000. And then the wetland markers, 4,900 pieces were shipped and we ordered 5,000. So basically, I'm, to make it clean, I'm just going to ask for a refund for those, not make them. Charlie and I talked about that was probably the best way to do it instead of trying to cut a new check when there's no money anymore and that. So let me see.
That sounds like a dollar apiece.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Oh, well.
Well, let's get this here done first. We'll set, we'll set a price for these.
We're missing, we're missing the Trump, the Trump hearing.
Okay, did you hear that Biden has COVID? Oh, my gosh, yes, it was a dollar apiece.
Okay. Okay, how about a motion then that any contractor who wishes to purchase these as their boundary markers, we sell them at $1 each?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we sell the markers for a dollar apiece.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned at 9:30.